We called Vernon out of it, yes. Yeah, we called Vernon out of it.
Yeah, well, I'm glad somebody caught him out of there. So Vernon is afraid of heights, so he's almost as bad as I am.
So he wouldn't be going up jumping out.
He wouldn't voluntarily be doing that.
He hadn't ever jumped out of a plane.
They have?
Yeah, they do. Had he got something, he'd think, "Well, he's been in a plane like this. She must not want to jump. I don't have to do that."
Really? Oh, these young people, I tell you, they think it's that dangerous.
I wouldn't do it.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, I would say, "I'd say no. I'm not going down there. I would die. Anticipation would kill me."
Yeah, the heart.
By the time he got ready to say, "Jump," he doesn't know where he's going.
Oh, my God.
Okay, I'll call our meeting to order at this time. Thank you everyone for coming this afternoon. At this time, I'd like to offer an invocation. Most gracious heavenly Father, we come here again today. We thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed so generously upon us this day and all the days that have come. And Father, we ask that you would continue to watch over us and guide and direct us so that we do our activities so that they would be pleasing to you. Father, we ask that you would look upon those that have been so adversely affected in the past days through hurricanes and tornadoes. And we pray for those that are caught up through no effort of their own in violence, those that seem like they, everything in the world seems to be working against them. May they always know that they can turn to you for comfort and peace. We ask these things in your name. Amen. We now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask if someone would make a motion that we would be able to accept the business agenda as it is presented to us.
I want to make a motion to accept the agenda as it's presented to us.
We have a motion by Councilman Bell and a second by Councilman Smith. Is there any more discussion on the matter? If there is none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. The agenda would be approved as it is presented. Anybody on unscheduled public comment, clerk? We do not have anybody, so we will move on down to item number five, which is the approval of the April 2nd, 2024 regular meeting minutes. When someone's ready, we accept a motion for that.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the April 2nd, 2024 regular city council meeting minutes as drafted.
Okay, motion is made by Councilwoman Bryant. Do we hear second to her motion?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stainback. Is there any more discussion on this matter? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Minutes would be approved as they are presented. Move on down to item six. I call on the city clerk, Ms. Story. We have two appointments tonight. Madam Clerk?
Here we go. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. The term for Gregory Browning as an ETJ member on the Rock Rapids area planning board and board of adjustment will expire June 1st, 2024. Mr. Browning contacted me and he is willing to serve another term. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners made the final appointment. Therefore, a ballot vote is not required for reappointment, but they do ask for city council's approval on that seat. The terms for Carrie Tuning and Henry Ford, who serve as planning board and board of adjustment members, will expire on June 1st. And the terms for Gregory Page and Stephen Ellis, who serve on the planning board, also expire June 1st, 2024. I contacted all four members and they're willing to serve another term on their respective boards. City council took a valid vote and Dr. Tuning, Mr. Ford, Mr. Page, and Mr. Ellis received a majority vote. I ask for city council to consider a motion to reappoint Greg Browning as an ETJ member on the Rock Rapids area planning board and board of adjustment, reappoint Gregory Page and Stephen Ellis to the Rock Rapids area planning board, and reappoint Carrie Tuning and Henry Ford to the Rock Rapids area planning board and board of adjustment. I know that's a lot.
Someone make a motion?
Make a motion to reappoint Greg Browning as the ETJ member on the Rock Rapids area planning board, board of adjustment, to reappoint Gregory Page and Stephen Ellis to the Rock Rapids area planning board, and reappoint Carrie Tuning and Henry Ford to the Rock Rapids area planning board, board of adjustment.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Stainback. Do we hear second to his motion?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Bryant. Is there any more discussion on this matter? If there is, is not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion would be approved and those individuals would be reappointed.
Okay. The next one concerns the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments Board. Mr. Browning, who you just reappointed, is an ETJ member on the planning board and board of adjustment, has been serving as the alternate member of the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments for many years, in addition to former Mayor Pro Tem Carl Farabee. Mr. Height, Executive Director for the Upper Coastal Plains, stated Mr. Browning has represented the city well, serving on the committee. Since Mr. Farabee is no longer an elected or appointed official, it's recommended that Mr. Browning be appointed as a primary member to represent the city of Rock Rapids. Therefore, I ask city council to consider a motion to appoint Greg Browning to serve as a primary member of the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments representing the city.
All right, do we hear such a motion at this time?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Greg Browning to serve as the primary member of the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments representing the city of Rock Rapids.
Okay, motion made by Councilwoman Bryant. Second to the motion. Second by Councilman Strickland. Any more discussion on the matter? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Mr. Brandon will be appointed to the committee. Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I call on the city manager, Ms. Trainum. She will make a presentation of the proposed 2425 budget.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just to set the tone here for tonight, this is the first run-through of our fiscal year 2025 budget. The budget is one of the most important decisions that the city council has to make. A policy decision, it's an ordinance. And so, we are in a, every four years with the county revaluation, we know that that's a hot topic too. And so, this is the level of review and effort that goes into our budget planning. We actually, thanks to our finance director and department head staff, who were efficient in getting their budget requests turned in, was able to come up with a first go-round of a balanced budget. And I didn't anticipate this tonight, but by general statutes, we have to present a balanced budget with a budget message no later than June 1st. And so, tonight, we are going to check the box of what is required by the statutes as far as presenting a balanced budget, an evaluation of comparison to the prior year, as well as just talking about some of the generalities of what is going to be funded. And so, I'm going to get into that presentation. You do have about eight pages in front of you for your reference, and I'm going to just start from the beginning one. The, as I said, for the fiscal year 2025 budget, and this starts July 1 of 2024 and goes through June 30 of '25. But just for the ease of everything, I want to refer to everything as FY25. So, we don't get into a lot of tongue-twisters here with saying multiple years and ranges here. As we've been looking into things, and we know that in the last few years, times have changed. We've gotten past the COVID era and into a new normal. And we have seen over the last few years, at global level, different types of war and activities and conflict. That impacts life here at home as we know it, as far as when you're trying to get in goods and materials and the cost of things. And so, in the last several years, I think everyone, pretty much, I don't need to convince you, that costs have gone up and they've stayed up. A few things have gone down, but we're having to adjust to that. As far as for the national and professional guidance, as I'd like to call it, but from U.S. Public Finance and other leading municipalities and so forth, Moody's provided an outlook for the 2024 for cities and counties, and I sent this article to you a few months ago. But kind of the strong points to hit home are trying to create those strong financial reserves to maintain effective governance, to help balance upward pressure that are from the wages and increasing capital cost. And because revenues are going to be, you know, revenues aren't promised every year, certain ones, and we don't know what they'll be. And so, a lot of effort goes into anticipating what those revenues are going to be and anticipating. It's a lot easier to anticipate what a lot of our expenses are going to be, because generally, we, like a lot of households too, the things that you need to get done, you can only afford to do a certain amount within each year or within a certain timeframe. And so, I feel like this first pass at the FY25 budget helps the city government to accomplish a lot, several things that have been either deferred for a long time, or they're just things that are needed for us to be able to continue and move forward into the future. A lot of the reason why, like almost all cities and towns, counties, governments, the public sector per se, everyone is facing the rising salaries. We've seen it in the media as far as, a lot of times you hear more about police, fire, and so forth, but it's happening everywhere. And it's because the private sector is outpacing the public sector. And so, governments are going to continue to be faced with the challenge of having to continue to maintain adequate salaries. And I know the city's really trying to do a good job and do so as well, and remain competitive in the market. But the city, as I state in here towards the bottom of the first page, will benefit from strong professional management as far as the changing economic conditions. We have a track record of really being able to maintain budgets. We know how to do a lot. This current fiscal year we're in right now, FY24, is one of the leanest operating budgets we've had in our existence, really, that I'm familiar with. And so, we know how to get things done for, not for very little, but there's a lot more that needs to be done or can be done, because the ages of our properties are outpacing some of these budgets to keep up with the appropriate levels of maintenance. So, we're trying to get in FY25, we're trying to get above the base level, because right now, there's not much more we can cut other than in our current year. There's not much more we can cut unless we wanted to really look at cutting major services. As we go into the proposed budget, just want to kind of highlight, on the second page here, kind of go into some of the highlights. We are looking at, this has been prepared with a budget revenue general fund of $19,852,046, which is about 10 and a half percent above this current year budget. The proposed budget includes a tax rate that has been revised down to .641 cents per $100 in value, which is two cents less than our current rate of .661. The budget provides sufficient funds for us to maintain some of our current levels of service and being able to think strategically about our future needs. The mention of the revenue neutral rate, and just to kind of, for education purposes, the revenue neutral rate is required by the general statutes when there's a revaluation year. And you have to state what the rate would be as if the revaluation never occurred. And since the values of properties in this particular revaluation went up, the revenue neutral rate that is proposed or provided by the county, as far as, it's a rate that's intended to get the same amount of property tax revenues as you would have had in the previous year, had the revaluation not occurred. And so, that's what that is about. And the only thing we have to do by law is to publish what that rate is and explain that. But there's no requirement whatsoever to adopt a revenue neutral rate. It is just there for information purposes to be published. And the city has to set a tax rate for its budget annually. And this is something we should be doing more frequently anyway. I think that from, in my 12 years of experience here at the city, it's been, hold the tax rate, find other ways to increase your revenues. So, revaluations do bring about a way to kind of reset and to help make up for differences due to cost over time. The budget itself, I think, really does try to set us up and prepare us for service needs and for planning for future capital projects, advances our information technology abilities and securities. It builds, the budget invests into growth and retention and compensation of our greatest resources, which are our employees. Without, many of the work that is done in the operations is manual labor or just labor by employees. There's a lot of skill-based labor and knowledge-based and so forth. But we've got to be able to maintain a workforce, to be able to keep things going, and also to provide opportunities for retention and so forth. The budget prioritizes our community current services and public safety, and also focuses on community appearance through the city initiatives that we have, including litter cleanup and property maintenance, and also upgrades and upgrades to help make things more energy efficient and so forth. Like I said, this is a generalized overview to summarize. As far as general fund revenues, so we're talking about the money coming in first. Many of our revenues are based on either, we have several different revenue sources. And a lot of our state dispersed sources are based on population. When, like the city of Rock Rapids, as our population continues to gradually decline over time, When, like the city of Verna Rapids, as our population continues to gradually decline over time, that per capita allocation goes down with it. So for population-based formulas, we're going to continue, as long as the population continues to decline, those revenues may adjust with that. And then there's some that are based on, for example, for Powell Bill, it is based on street mileage. With new development, like when communities that have newer subdivisions and new roads coming in, that road mileage increases, so something like Powell Bill funds would go up. But, so we have, you know, Verna Rapids is, I think, we're maintaining ourselves and we're just, we're gradually holding steady from what was probably a much bigger loss about 20 years ago or so when the mills closed. And so I think that we've kind of gotten over that initial loss of employment and jobs in the area and kind of normalized now into rebranding the town and the city and our community and finding a new identity past the mill village, original industrial town concept. So getting back to our revenues, property taxes. Property taxes are the city's largest source of revenue. Property taxes are a very reliable and steady source of revenue because one, the way that they're collected through the county does our tax collections. And that's, there's compensation with that. And then also, the county has the, they're the ones, the county is responsible for conducting the appraisals of property. And so the city staff have no involvement in what the property values are. And so as the county continues to look at, and I don't know if they're still doing appeals and things like that, but they have sent us what they feel like is their preliminary, as of March 7th, their preliminary look at what the new tax base is estimated to be. There has, in the last, in the last, I say, it says on here, last four years, the average year, with each year, the average growth rate has only just been over like 1.34% each year. So it's a very slow growth rate when it comes down to it. And this is one of the things that is confused, or I guess it's a caveat of the revenue neutral thing because the formula that the state provides in the general statutes only compares to the fiscal year that you're currently in. It doesn't look at what the change in values have been over four years or eight years, depending on the valuation. And so when a revenue neutral rate is discussed, it's not about what is really happening. It's only comparing to what the fiscal year prior to it. So keep that in mind when we talk about revaluation and the impact that that makes because property values, which counties have gone to doing revaluations every four years, or a lot of them have, not all, but you know, as we know, it's required every eight. But with the changing in the tax bases and things, it helps reduce some of the shock as when rates are adjusted throughout the years. In our current fiscal year right now, FY24, we budgeted Avalram tax revenue at $7,599, or $599,720. So basically 7.6 million. The year before that, we estimated, and this came out of our audit, the year before that, we estimated 7.2 million and realized just, we were within, what, $60,000 maybe of what we estimated and what we actually received. So budgeting, like we said, is a, it's a lot of estimating and using, making educated decisions about what the revenues will do. We try to be very conservative in our estimates because we don't want to underestimate or overestimate and underdeliver, I guess you can say. But so as part of the general statutes and the budget message, we have to conduct an analysis of the current levy, and that's based on the prior year. And so this information comes directly from the 23 auditor's report on page 79 as far as the analysis of the current levy. And you can see in here that the .661 is what has been in place for some time. And that does include a one cent contribution to the rescue squad that was approved by voter referendum a few years ago. So for FY23, the property values were at $1,102 million, and they have gone up some since then. And the total profit valuation is listed there, as well as the net levies and what has been collected. So in FY23, with motor vehicles and properties, we end up realizing about $8.3 million. And then we'll know in the fall how we closed out this current fiscal year as well as far as taxes, but we remain on schedule. This budget FY25 that's recommended was prepared, as mentioned, using the .641 rate, which is two cents less than the current rate. And one cent with this is, one cent is generated, expected to generate a full tax base of $152,481. And that's before any discounts or collection fees that are charged by the county. So that's kind of like your gross revenue. And then with your actual take-home pay is, I guess you can say, we get down to about, so really, and it's going to be about $150,000 or $159,050 after their collection costs are deducted. So one cent, $150,000, or close to $151,000. So this 64, 1, 641 cents, what is supposed to realize? Just over 9 million, going on to page four now. which is about, compared to the revenue neutral rate that is proposed is just over a million more than what we're currently collecting based on the current tax values. The new tax values from the '24 revaluation in maintaining a, or at a 641 budget would bring in about $941,000 or almost $942,000. So there's a table here in the middle of page four that shows just some examples of what the fluctuations in a tax rate and the impact on the revenue. But the first at the top is our current rate at .661. If we were to have, for example, if we were to keep .661, we would bring in approximately an additional $1.24 million. But if you went down to the revenue neutral rate, we would bring in no additional tax dollars. We feel like that the council has mentioned several times, reducing the current rate down some. And so this is what has been presented based upon that. Some of our other sources of revenue as well that we mostly talk about include the local sales tax. Sales tax is our second largest source of revenue for the city. And unfortunately, sales tax revenues are starting to cool down some for the first time in many years. I think that the city of Verna Rapids will continue to do fairly well as more of the center of commerce for our region as far as in a rural area, being a micropolitan. A lot of people come into the city to spend money and do things. But statewide and so forth, sales tax revenues are encouraged to be a lot, very conservative. So we're not going to see as much as we have in the past. One thing that in the last three to five years that we experienced was with some of the COVID monies and supports and some of the stimulus monies is that people were spending a lot more money. And so a couple of years ago, we really realized the benefit of those sales tax dollars. But as things have increased in price and continue to mean that, people's affordability has changed. And so consumer choice and consumer confidence and what they're spending their money on is being reflected in the market here. And so this, it is concerning being our second largest source of revenue, that sales tax, it goes to support the reason why we need to have a tax rate above revenue neutral to be able to make up for any losses in that. Powell Bill funds, just trying to explain some of that because we've had some questions in the past about it, but that one is based on population and per capita, I mean, per capita and street mileage. And so during the next fiscal year, we expect to receive about $521,000 from the state for local street mileage purposes that are, have restricted uses. Some of the other revenues that we openly discuss too are investment earnings. This is one thing that has been a major change for, I think, all local governments is the investment revenues where for several years and going back to even two fiscal years ago, I think we budgeted $1,000 or $2,500 in investment and we have realized six figures in that in the last year and more from the high interest rates. The Federal Reserve is expected to reduce that interest rate at some point. And I think it's in September is when they're going to meet again to discuss it. So we'll have a little bit of a warning. So we've estimated those revenues at $240,000, where we have pretty much doubled that in this current fiscal year through our investments into cash management. So I'll put it this way, the investment rev, investment earnings have been very much appreciated. It's been a welcome gift, but we know it won't last long. And then alcoholic beverage tax, this is one that has gone up and up and up every year. So we appreciate those who contribute to it. But the sales tax revenues on ABC products, we have been able to increase our budget by about $10,000 each year because of the rising tax on ABC products. And then finally, fund balance. This is one of the things that council has talked about as well, but this proposed budget does not include any use of fund balance. Zero fund balance to balance the budget. So we've talked about revenues now. And then also, at the end of your packet, it's in front of you, the second to last, on page seven of eight, there's a spreadsheet in the back. This goes over all of your revenue sources by fund. And I've also provided a snapshot of what the revenues were like in the last couple fiscal years before this. So you can see where the property taxes have gone up a little bit and a little bit, but these, in FY24, '23 and '22 was based on a different tax rate than the proposed rate that's for FY25. And then before this meeting started, we realized there's one that needed to be looked at for the rescue squad to adjust that. But like I said before, this is a first pass and these are our first estimates at this. So if you have any other questions about things. The other most important source of revenue that we have would be our solid waste user fees and penalties. This is our trash collection, the collections that are associated with our public works department. That brings in over $2 million annually. And then this upcoming fiscal year, we're not proposing any rate increases for that. They're intended to remain the same. So go through there. But you can see in comparing some of the other fiscal years, what's kind of, the estimates have gone up and what's kind of gone down. And this is based on what we have actually collected and the statistics of anticipating what we should receive. So I'm going to flip back to page five of eight where we were and start talking about expenditures. And just to hit some of the highlights here, our personnel expenses. We are a local government, we are a service-based. Our personnel expenses, unlike the private sector, are going to be significant compared to our budgets. So our salaries end up being about 12 million. The budget for FY25 includes funding for 156 full-time employees as well as about 24 part-time and about 24 seasonals. And in here, we're proposing a cost of living adjustment of 3% that is based upon the Consumer Price Index for the South Region of the United States as well as from information from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. I think the average in North Carolina is close to 3%, 3.9 in some areas. So a lot of our expenditures have to do with the employer mandated benefits. And so health insurance, we had a, we had a small increase in health insurance. We had, initially, we had kind of a double-digit increase and our insurance broker at GW Hux and Ms. Cottle and I, we met with them and we agreed to not shop elsewhere and they were able to get that down to about 7%. Does that sound right? So our increases, we can expect an increase, but we were able to get a responsible and modest increase for that and modify our plan, some for the upcoming year, which is a plug. Open enrollment is tomorrow and Thursday. But there's no changes other than that. We'll continue to pay 100% for our employees' health, dental and vision insurance as well. The state mandated retirement contributions are going to go up every year. The rates of contribution are scheduled to go up every year. And this is to help support the retirement of other public servants and, as well as our own. And the employees themselves of their salary put 6% in, and then the city does the other. So the impact of all of these increases is about $140,000 on our overall budget, which compared to the overall top of the budget is fair in this climate that we're in. And then our debt service, our expenses for any debts. We have the Verna Rapids theater debt, which is not paid out of the general fund budget. Well, it's budgeted in general fund, but we transfer it to a separate fund. So it's in here, but the, the long-term debts that you'll see in here that we do have are three other financing instruments. So our annual payment for the theater bonds is $952,137. And other than that, we'll have an additional about $135,382 on the remaining debt instruments. And so we have the theater accounts and as well as the fire station to construction. And then in this upcoming fiscal year, the end of '25, we'll satisfy the third financing debt, which was for the purchase of, I think, like five police vehicles and something maybe back in 2020. So what I'm trying to say here is too, is we have our long-term debt obligations. We have significantly reduced our obligations in the last several years by paying off loans early and getting this, and not taking out any additional debt. And with the revaluation there, it really improves the city's capacity for borrowing, should we need to in the future. I say, should we need to, likely we'll need to borrow money for something. But right now, we're in a good position because the general statutes limit the city to 8% of your total assessed taxable values. And we're continuing to pay down other debts. I'm going to switch to the last page here. There's a table in here that shows what are, the last page of here is blue. This are the expenses. And these are listed by our, the funding department. So what we have in the first column is the description of the department or division or unit, however you want to break it down. But the second column is the 24 budget ordinance. So when we started the fiscal year in July 1 of 2023, the values listed here are what we went into the fiscal year at, at a $17,760,000 budget. The middle, I guess, column here, FY25 department request, is what has been requested by, by the representative of the respective departments or that's been requested as a need. And then the third column, we had the, or fourth, I guess, the manager's recommendation. And this is what is recommended here. So the next column over will be the difference, the dollar difference between So the next column over will be the difference, the dollar difference between the city manager's recommendation compared to what was requested by the department. And then in the last column on the far right is the percent difference of that change. And so you can see here that, you can look at the numbers to see what was, what we're currently operating in and where some of, and on what was requested, what's recommended, and then obviously the difference here. Because I'll give an example here, if you look at legal, for example, it may show a 17% decrease from what's been kind of recommended and what's, was requested, but we're talking about a difference of $5,000 here. So the percentages are relative to the overall budget for, compared to what is in our current fiscal year. I do want to make a mention that the, there is a big change here down in property maintenance and building maintenance. Because if you're, I don't, I didn't want to really jump around, but when you start looking at percentages, you look for what's going to be one of the biggest ones. And so it shows a minus 95% and a positive 100%. These were one, this was all under property maintenance. And so in this upcoming fiscal year, we're proposing to divide this out. This is housed in public works, but it's property maintenance and then it was building and property. And so we've divided them out into their own respective units to, because the workload's a little bit different. So that's what kind of shows here, but your building maintenance is a little, the anomaly there as far as those percentages and differences are concerned. I do want to kind of go up here for the top for legislative is city council. Some of the funds for travel and training and meetings have been increased as well. In April of 2026, so this time next year roughly, the city, North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference is going to be in Greenville. And so there would be some other opportunities as well, but we want to make sure that council members have an opportunity to attend a statewide conference that's not going to be too far from home. At least if y'all can make it for a day or take part of some of those trainings as well. In general government, one of the primary increases that we have in general government, and this goes to serve everyone, as far as employees, anyone who gets a paycheck, work orders and so forth, but we really need to, and the budget includes the first year funding because the first year is the most. But we've talked about this a couple, last couple of years. But our operating system, our, our software technology we use for our financial and work orders and I don't, for lack of better words, I mean, it is our, our central core operating system. Really needs to be upgraded. We looked at, we proposed this at least two years ago when we were looking at ARPA money, and ended up agreeing to say, all right, well, let's just do the permit software first and get that going and, you know, try to reduce like the overall expense at first. But this is, it's a substantial need and it's supported by our city administration, department heads and so forth, because we are operating in, I think, two or maybe even three different systems. Our current software that we use was purchased new in, I think, 2013 or 14. And it is, it's on its last, I mean, the, the future of it is unknown. And not, and when that was incorporated by the city at the time, it was supposed to be phased out to other departments and that never happened. And so they're still operating in the one that was before this one. So there's another alphabet combination with it. And so we really, our options are going to have to be replace what we have in all operations of the city go into is one system. Or we're going to probably have to hire more staff to be able to do more manual work, to be able to get people paid, to be able to process things, to be able to work and so forth. Like I said, it is the, it is the central operating system. And what we are looking at and have, and seen has been one that would be a cloud-based one as well. So that could be accessed from anywhere without having to have it hard drive in a, in a city hall building or something like that. This would help to improve our efficiencies significantly, especially in budgeting and planning and so forth, but we'll, we'll have some more information on that soon. Or we can take some questions on it when we get to that point. But for the most part, what we have done is tried to reestablish some of the deferred, like the long-term deferred maintenance and things like that in the departments that are needed. And the departments can, you know, talk about those specific needs, but we're, for example, in the community center, which is the civic center, talking about doing new windows for, improve the efficiency, is that right, windows? Yeah, to improve the heat efficiency and so forth. So as we know, we have a lot of older buildings, our buildings are aging and we've got to lead by example and taking care of our property too. When we try to direct our citizens to do so, we need to lead by examples as well. So you can see there with those expenses, as far as that is concerned. And like I said, high level, looking at that. So really as far as to keep this as a first pass and in closing, like, you know, we have had a lot of, we've had a lot of changes in the last few years. We've had several different council members for various reasons. We've had several new department heads for various reasons. And when you have these significant changes, that takes time. And, and I think we've got a lot going on, a lot of good things going on that, that we can grow and advance this community in our, in the city business as well. I think that the budget would set a lot of things in motion, especially through a new operating system. That would help prepare us for that growth and development and moving into the future. We were at the City Vision Conference that Councilman Bell and I had just attended. A lot of the focus was on, on all the different age groups in the working place, all the different generations. And there's five generations in today's workforce, five. And the younger kids coming up now have always had the internet. They've never lived without it. And I say kids, they're young adults. And so we're traditionally, in the past, people would work 30 years. You know, they'd go to high school, go to college, get married, have kids, work 30 years and retire. Now folks are at all life stages in the workforce. And, and that does impact your workload because you can, you know, you say the same thing to two or three different people and depending on their age, they're going to receive it differently. And so as managers and as an employer, we're having to constantly stay up to date and try to evolve with society as well so that we can even communicate with our employees. And so for those of us that have, I guess, are around children a lot more, it might be a little bit easier because you pick up on certain words. But other than that, we're in a, we're in a changing society that is, what it's showing us is that it's going to keep changing whether or not we're going to keep up or not. It just depends on how far behind we want to get. But as I've said, we, we really, our, this budget is attempt to address some minimum maintenance levels and services that we have. It is, and the services are in line with the city council's vision for community improvement, community beautification, maintaining our trash collections and litter and, and public safety, being able to provide our police and fire protection, building inspections, keeping our streets clean. We do a lot as far, and then even parks and recreation. There are hundreds or hundreds of families out, well, tonight's Tuesday, but Monday or Wednesday night, Monday or Wednesday night, go to any of the parks because you get baseball on, baseball, T-ball, and different age groups and softball on every single park. And the drive-through lines are also getting packed too as well. But, but our, our facilities are in use, they're in demand. And, and they need, they have improvement needs too. Because recreation, those facilities are one that help drive tourism-related things as well. And, and we'll, I'll mention something about that too. But I just really want to express my thanks to the department heads and to their staff and those who contribute into the budget planning and preparation process. Because you're not doing this every, I mean, we, we're aware of the numbers every day and so forth, but when you sit down and have to really get into the business of it, it takes time. And so I appreciate y'all allowing me the opportunity to go ahead and do this tonight. I feel like we're two weeks ahead of schedule as far as this one's concerned, but wanted to determine what level of additional efforts too that would be needed if we need to schedule some workshop, an additional review. But as I said, we have to schedule a public hearing, which what we proposed to do, that would be during the June 4th meeting. And that's when we have to have a tax rate advertised prior to that and receive any input. And what we would look to do is ask council for approval of the budget on June 18th during that meeting. So that's kind of what we're looking at now as far as a timeline. July the 1st is a Monday and we have to have the budget adopted by then. So we have some time for, you know, to talk about some things, but want to see, want to kind of put this out here and, and get some response. Does anyone have any questions or comments at this time or?
Are you going to give us a book about the budget so we compare the budget for this year compared to what it was last year?
Yes.
Look at each item before we go to a meeting. And my next request, I noticed on my calendar, the meeting's on May 14th.
We, we talked about having that next Tuesday as a workshop possibility, yes.
Okay, can we change that to either Monday or Thursday or Friday?
Yeah, we can probably change that date.
If it's okay with the rest of the council. I have, I have two doctor's appointments that day in Raleigh.
Okay. Let, let me, maybe we can figure out a new date. Or I'll have to get back with you on that, but we'll look at maybe doing that Thursday. I think that was the alternate. Okay. If we do Thursday the 16th, we can start as early as, is it one, one or two o'clock? Okay. If we wanted to meet in here, we would have to meet after Meals on Wheels completes. So we could do something mid to late afternoon rather than starting in the evening. Okay. Or we can, we can utilize city hall and meet in the morning at any time.
The 15th, we're going to meet at city hall, 15th would be okay.
Any day for me.
Okay. Wednesday the 15th? Got some nods? All right, Wednesday the 15th. We'll do city hall. We'll get a timeout to you because Tracy will set it, but we'll probably start. Y'all have a preference?
Are we going to have all department heads in that, that day?
Right, as of right now, I'll have one that will be out of town, but but he may be able to make it that morning, it's legislative day at the general assembly.
Probably need to start at nine to nine thirty.
All right, we'll start in the morning, we'll get an announcement out. On, so Wednesday, May 15th. Probably look at starting around nine, nine o'clock in the morning. Okay.
Yeah, 15th, yeah. I got one other question for you too. I know in the '23, '24 budget, we've amended this budget a couple of times. Is the total budget for the year '23, '24, is it still $17,760,000 or has it increased?
For '24, the current year, it did increase with a few budget amendments, we had some increases.
What, what did it increase to?
I will let you know tomorrow. I know we, we went up.
I know we went up 64 one time and then we went up a different, you know, for something else too.
Yeah, there was one for a workman's comp thing that came in, but, but it's gone, I mean, it's gone up some, but, but I can get that final number to you. Right, those increases are not in this, this, in, in that FY '24, that's why I noted on the, the spreadsheet here that, that started July 1st. That was what it was July 1st, but we'll get that to you with amendments.
Okay, because I know on the last financial report we got, the budget was the same as 17 as it is here, that's the reason I was wondering.
It's still probably 17-something, but I don't think we, we didn't breach 18.
We can't count that till we get it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll provide you with the, with the revised FY '24.
How many full-time people did you say?
154 positions?
And about 25 part-time?
I'm, excuse me, 156, not 154, 156 full-time.
And could you briefly tell us again what the general government encompasses? Is that, is any salaries in that?
No, there's no salaries.
No salaries, $2 million?
Yeah, general government includes our, our health, like some of our health insurance payment or the city portion of it. It includes our retirees' group health insurance. It budgets for like holiday merit. A lot of our association dues and subscriptions, our insurance and bonds, general liability insurance, workman's compensation insurance, our contribution of $25,000 to the Halifax, Northampton Regional Airport. It includes some of our other expenses related with financial reporting, like under the GOSB requirements. Let's see. Includes like the leases for our copy and printing machines throughout the city government and advertising costs. And then also what's included in that too would be also the Open Gov Citizen Services as well as the proposed incorporation of the financials and budget and planning procurement part. Now that one is going to be, you know, that's what helps drive that up some, but that first year is always going to cost more because of the implementation that's required. And then after that is a basically ongoing subscription.
But is that, it seemed to me like last year at this time that you all gave us a really large figure. We got it down some, but it was supposed to be the first year was going to cost a lot more and then it was going to come down some. And now it's up 20% again this year. We got no, we don't have any more people, I guess. That's the thing that bothers me is the budget keeps going up. We got less and less people that own homes, we're taxing them more and more. I mean, it doesn't take anybody really smart to figure out probably that's one reason that people are moving outside of the community because we're taxing them so much. And that's why sales tax is going down because people don't live here, they're moving away. And, and you also, you got 240,000. And you also, you got $240,000, that's about two cent on the, on the tax rate that's coming in next year, you got $263,000 less in debt payment, so that's a half a million, another half a million dollars on top of a million, even if you give the two-cent tax cut that you were, you were talking about doing from '66 to '64, that's just a couple of things that I put down. You mentioned too, about doing it like a business, I think if this was a business, that some of these costs would have to be much less, because businesses don't have the luxury of just charging people more, they have to run it like a, this is not run like a business, a private business, and I understand it's not a quote "private" business. But it looks to me like it's, it's going to be a real shock to quite a few people, myself included, because, because most everybody's property went up 30, anywhere from 30 to 50%. And it's going to be a big, big tax increase on a lot of people. And I think more about it for businesses more so than, not being critical at all, but if somebody, you know, has a modest home, they're, they might have a modest income too, so $100 to them is $100 that they have left to spend on groceries, so. I don't know, I just think it's something to think about, are we, are we still trying to do things that maybe the public sector should be, or the volunteer people might could be doing things? The other thing we talked about, are you all looking, I don't know if this is the right time to ask about it now, but are you all looking at, when we have new hires, informing them that the council has discussed not, not for anybody that's currently working, but not paying their health insurance from age 48 to 65, like we're doing now?
Yes, that's, it's part of the personnel policy that is under our final, Christine and I are, we are planning to sunset that out, and that is in, we have a date in there. I think we set that out for, well, tentatively, I think, January 1 of 2026, I think, tentatively, but we can change that, but we wanted to give it time to, we don't, we want to have it where, really, it's a good effort, it's a good recruitment and retention tool too, but I wanted to put some time out there for that sunset clause to occur, so, but yes, we do have that in there, as far, in the draft personnel policy, that will come before you all, probably at the next meeting, or, yeah. So with that updated personnel policy, and really, a lot of the changes in the personnel policy are to modernize the language, because it's been over 20 years, or, yeah, it's probably been 30 years since a major overhaul on our personnel policy, and when it refers to landline phones and things like that, like, we've got to make some changes, but, plus, it helps us with liability and employment rights, and it's a good information tool. But yes, we are looking at phasing that out.
Update me on, I know we pay 100% for employee only, for medical, dental, and vision. What part do we pay toward family coverage?
I don't have those figures in front of me right now, we do pay a portion of each.
We've been significantly, it used to be that we would cover as much as 50% to offset the costs. We've been driving those down year after year incrementally, so it doesn't hit our employees at once. So like, for example, our family plan, increase 100 and some dollars per pay period, that's open enrollment will be tomorrow, and that puts us less than $200 that we will be supporting that family plan. So within the next year or two, it should be where we're contributing nothing to that.
We are in a, we're trying to phase out the city's share of contribution in that, but without overburdening some of the participating employees that, you know, are on there now.
Well, one thing I'd like, if the budget's approved, that we let the employees know, not only are they getting a 3% increase in salary, but they're getting a 7% increase in the benefits for insurance, plus a percent for their retirement, and police department is getting an extra percent for their retirement. So we need to make sure we let them know, not a 3%, but they're really getting a 10% increase in salary.
If that, if that's how you want to explain it, but there are mandated changes that really are at no fault of ours.
I know they're mandated, but it's still, the city's still paying it.
Oh, yes, the city has to pay it, and it goes towards the, a lot of the baby boomer retirement right now, to help sustain them, and...
So that is part of their total compensation package, but something like, like the city is mandated by the local government retirement system to pay towards their local government retirement benefit. That increase is the same here as it is Rocky Mount, Charlotte, it's the same, they set that every year, so it wouldn't be a competitive advantage, that's the issue.
Well, I'm not saying it's a competitive advantage, of course, we're not Raleigh and we're not Rocky Mount, we're Roanoke Rapids. These, the employees are getting a benefit out of us paying the whole insurance fund, and they need to know that they're getting a benefit from it.
That, that is correct, and that should be demonstrated every year.
Sure.
Yes, and like we mentioned, open enrollment is tomorrow and the next day, and following open enrollment, human resources intends to create a total compensation package again to show them what FY, what July 1 fiscal year will look at, look like with that. And again, like I said, this is a first pass, but as far as the property tax rate goes, that's really what is going to kind of make the difference in our, in our budget, and when we have to go prepare to advertise one, is there a consensus of the council with the current proposed tax rate?
Well, I like, I like the point that you cut the tax rate down to 64 instead of letting it be at 66. At least it's showing the citizens that we're trying to do something, so I appreciate you doing that.
And again, during our meeting on the 20, our next council meeting in two weeks, you know, a more detailed present, we'll get your notebooks and things too, ready for you, but a more detailed information, but when we advertise the June public hearing is when we have to have a, that tax rate and balance budget to go with it, before we send in the newspaper ad. Is there anything else? Any other questions or...
I think a couple of months, a month or so ago, we talked about setting a date for compensation for those that work comp time, is that reflected?
Okay, so with comp time, um...
I thought we gave them a date of end of this, this fiscal year, or did I understand that correctly?
Well, beginning, so in a year, in just about a year from now, we're, we'll have to start accounting, according to government accounting standards board, we have to log our comp time as a liability. So we've been trying to encourage employees to reduce their comp time, because we haven't been paying overtime, because we've been trying to save money, but we've had employees that have earned so much comp time that, and they're so short, and they had been for years, like so short-staffed, that they couldn't even take the time off to be able to use it, and so, but we have been working to get those numbers reduced to an acceptable level, and really, right now, it's like, looking at the balance, is, it's, it's less than $200,000 from what our current obligation is, and that could be one of those things where we either log it as a debt, or in our annual budget going forward, or we can pay it out, pay out overtime more. But either way, there's employees that we have no other choice, you know, if they're a non-exempt employee, then we have to pay them, but we are working to get those numbers down, and that we have reduced those fairly significantly in the last several months.
Okay, and exempt employees are not continuing to be compensated, is that right?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes.
Anything else before we get a motion to adjourn?
No, I, in lieu of me giving a report, Chief Patrick has a few things he was going to share that have been asked for an update as well. But if you all would, if you have questions, please direct them to me, I mean, we want to try and get them answered and do some...
Mayor, council, citizens, I'm here to update you on the fire trucks, but before we get into that too much, I do have one thing I want to speak to you about. I received an email earlier this week from the International Association of Fire Chiefs, and apparently, there's going to be a vote in DC on the, basically on the Safer and AFG Grant Program. That is supposed to sunset, I believe, this year, and so they are wanting us to get our representatives to continue that program. Of course, just to bring you guys up to speed on that program, that is the program that we received, the $500,000 funding for that fire truck. That's also the same grant funding that we were able to get through the Halifax County Firefighters Association, which was about a million dollars for all the fire departments in the county to be able to get Viper radios, so I'm just putting that out there, if you guys could notify, you know, either Don Davis or Tom Tillis, our representatives, and just, you know, I encourage you to support that, you know, because it's been a blessing to us over the past four to five years for our, for our department alone, so. Moving forward, the, the first truck, as we, I think everybody's aware, is in Rocky Mount. I have a meeting in the morning down there with them, hopefully that truck will be here, and then by the end of this month, we'll be here, by the end of this month. They are in the process of mounting the last few pieces of equipment, I think they will mount, waiting for a bracket to come in today, when we spoke to them. I also spoke to them about the second truck. The second truck is right now scheduled to hit the assembly line towards the end of June, and if all works out and everything goes good, it looks like that will be coming off the assembly line sometime around the end of September or October, sometime around Oc, September to October, so that's what we're looking like on that second truck. Right now, we are just about finished our hydrants, we've got about 23 more, and so the next few days, they should complete those, and we will be finished with our annual hydrant testing again for, for this year. And last but not least, I thank you guys that, that came to our Veterans Breakfast, it seemed to be a very good hit once again. We had over, over 100 veterans that were registered, that came and attended, and so I thank y'all's support again for that, and I thank our sponsors, you know, the sponsors, if it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to put that on, but I think it was well perceived by the veterans and the sponsors and their volunteers, which helped us be able to do that event, and so, subject to your questions, that's all I have.
Can you send us an email on the grant information?
I will, yes sir. As far as the, like, bill number and things like that.
That's fine.
Okay, yes, I'll do that first thing in the morning. Thank you.
And Chief Patrick, thank you, and to Chief Hucks and your, your staff, the firemen, for the breakfast as well, it was really special, and for including the department heads as well in it, and...
Yeah, we, we thank everyone for helping out, and like you said, a lot of department heads came in and helped us out as well, and our guys enjoy doing that every year, they look forward to being able to do that, it's one way we can give back to our veterans who've done so much for us, so.
And we were able to recognize our volunteer, our veteran employees as well, some of the things that, and I'm just going to be very brief, but some of the things they say about veteran employees in the managing world is that they're very good at following directions, because they're come from very structured environments of militaries, that they're very good at reviewing their, their work, and constantly saying, how do we improve, like, kind of doing after-action reviews of things, that they're following order and command and so forth, and really, just that loyalty and so forth, and so we welcome veterans as employees and potential employees with the city.
Motion by Councilman Steinbach, second to his motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Smith, all in favor, signify by say a "aye."
Aye.
If there's no...